Okay. All right, I'll call over the January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five regular town council meeting at six oh five, roll call please. Present?
Present.
Present.
Here.
All right, well, thank you. Please join us for prayer and then follow by pledge allegiance.
Father God, we just ask your presence here this evening. We just asked your protection and your guidance in all that we do. We also asked your protection on our employees and just lead them, Lord, let them be safe in all that they do and just, Lord, we just appreciate them so much. Lord, we just ask you to to bless the things that we do every day and just bless us with our vision going forward and just let us have favor and just thank you for being a good and great God. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, individual liberty, justice forever.
Motion to amend or adopt the agenda is presented.
So moved.
A motion by Randy, a second.
Second.
Second by Terry. All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign. Nay, motion approved. Permission to amend submitted by the clerk treasurer, also noted upon our website.
So moved.
Motion by Randy, a second.
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign, nay, motion approved. Permission to allow is claimed submitted by clerk treasurer, also noted upon our website.
So moved.
Yeah, a motion by Randy, a second.
Second.
Second by Terry. Any final discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign, nay, motion approved. Okay. Okay, something that we discussed our last meeting, filling upon our two thousand twenty five Board of Zoning Appeals appointment after the exiting of County Councilman now, Chris Fox, graduate and everything on his new position and new journey with his replacement in the same district as Dr. Louis Jensen. He once served on the Albany Beezy Board and zoning and other multiple local boards within our Floyd and Clark County areas. Seems to be very knowledgeable. I think it'd be a great asset. And I think that we was able to discuss any concerns or any thoughts and with that, I ask for a motion for that approval.
So moved.
A motion by Terry, a second.
Oh, second.
Second by Randy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign, nay, motion approved. Thank you. Comments from the public on any agenda items? No one brought anything to me? We have four ordinances this evening. First ordinance is ordinance two zero two five dash O R dash zero zero one, ordinance disposing of surplus or worthless personal property belonging to the town of Salasburg, Indiana. We have, is that you, Matt? Okay, this, yeah, this is our, some of our police stuff. So I have our Assistant Chief, Matt, with us here tonight and so Mr. Adams, Chief, Assistant Chief Adams, you tell us what you got here.
So every year, beginning of the year, we usually purchase new vehicles. We trade in older vehicles that have been giving us problems, have high mileage. So we've got a twenty nineteen Charger that's got eighty nine thousand miles on it and then have a twenty twenty Durango that's got a little over ninety thousand miles on it. Those will be the two vehicles that we're asking to deem surplus so that way we could trade those in toward new vehicles.
Okay. Okay, like, say this is something commonly done at the first year, as we've always been very supportive of the safety of our officers in our community. And so as he noted, sitting there and says, whereas this council has recommendation of the chief police has determined the need to trade in or sell two older cars, therefore it be ordained by the town council of Salasburg, Indiana, following personal property shall be disposed of consistent with Indiana law, a two thousand nineteen Dodge Charger and a two thousand twenty Dodge Durango. This council further grants the town manager, chief of police with authority to either exclusively sell or trade the above referred personal property. The order shall be in full force and effective on its passage and prolongation of it evident by the affirmative signatures of the undersigned majority of the duly elected and serving members of this council. So with that, I ask for a motion for approval.
Good questions now.
Sure, absolutely.
Matt, with these cars you mentioned earlier, you might be having some issues with them?
Yes, so both of them are out of warranty with the high miles and we're starting to have some issues with them. So currently they are parked, so that way we don't have any any accidents with them or parts to where it can be jeopardized to safety for the officer or anybody in the community.
Just curious what, what, I mean, I know we trade cars in, you know, is this normal, eighty nine and ninety thousand miles, is that normal about the time we trade them in or is it?
Yes, sir.
Would you, would you be trading them if they didn't have problems?
Yes.
You would be, so it's customary.
They're, they're out of warranty. They're gonna end up being maintenance money bits for us.
And I guess the, the other question I would have with the, with a service car like that, there's probably lots and lots of idle time on them as well, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Motion.
Yes, sir, please.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Randy, a second.
Second.
Second by Terry. Any final discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign, nay, motion approved. Thank you very much.
Sir.
Uh, ordinance two zero two five dash O R dash zero zero two, an ordinance.
Mr. President, sorry to interrupt.
Sorry, sure. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. That's right. I got resolution in my mind. Thank you. Okay, motion to waive the second reading of ordinance two zero two five dash O R dash zero zero one. Okay, motion by Randy, a second.
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign, nay, motion approved. Motion approved, ordinance two zero two five dash O R dash zero zero one, an ordinance disposing of surplus or worthless personal property belonging to the town of Salasburg, Indiana.
So moved.
Got a motion by Randy, a second.
Second.
Second by Terry. All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign, nay, motion approved. Thank you. Thank you, Jake. Uh, ordinance two zero two five.
Mr. President, when, when this paperwork gets to you, there's two titles here that you have to sign your name on.
Thank you very much. All right. Like I said, ordinance two zero two five dash O R dash zero zero two, an ordinance amending one one zero point three zero dash one one zero point three five of the code of ordinances for the town of Salasburg, Indiana. Is this you, Jake, or Charlie?
Uh, I'll take this one.
Okay.
All right, so going through our ordinances and this is related to some phone calls and having some conversation with some food truck vendors. Apparently the town of Salasburg is the only community that does not permit food trucks. So in having, without naming names, a regular food truck vendor here actually brought this to me. Looked at some other communities and whatnot. We had a, we have a thing in our ordinances that relates to ice cream trucks. What this does is repeals and replaces the ice cream truck ordinance and references food trucks and ice cream trucks. The old ordinance basically put the responsibility ice cream trucks on the police department solely. I had a conversation with Chief Whalen. He doesn't believe that should be housed in the police department and I would be in agreeance with that. So what this does on a food truck establishes a general process. If you want to have a food truck in the town of Salasburg, what does that look like? More or less, you need to have a license. You need to have your license from the Clark County Health Department. It's part of the application. You cannot sit in a single location more than twelve hours in a single day. You can't be permanently affixed. You cannot have permanent utilities. You can't block traffic, obstruct vehicle or pedestrians, sidewalks, et cetera. If you're gonna operate on private property, you gotta write consent. And it goes down through some other standards. Food truck must be bended towards the sidewalk. Mobile food trucks should operate within fifty foot of any, should not operate within fifty feet of a facade and it goes down through. Talks about license requirements. You gotta have proof of insurance, Clark County Health Department permit. It's called food establishment permit. Each truck has to be permitted separately. We will handle these permitting through the permitting office here in the town hall. And again, it goes, goes through pre-cut, cut and dry. There is an application that is part of this that would need to be completed and submitted and then we would issue a sticker, more or less, that goes into the truck so they can operate within town limits. Again, I think it's just more or less a level of safety more than anything. There are some people running around operating vendor, food vendor type stuff that have not gone through the health department, things of that nature. This just verifies that they have and put out some guidelines of where they can and cannot operate within town. In short.
Charlie, if they're granted a permit, what, what's the timeframe?
One year. Well, it's only good for the calendar year.
Okay.
So if we came in today and got your permit, it'd be good through December thirty first of twenty five. If you came in December twentieth and got your permit, it would only be good through December thirty first of twenty five.
Okay.
So now most, most are gonna operate in the spring to mid to late summer, fall, as far as that goes. There are some penalties involved that basically the code enforcement, myself or my designee can go out. And basically just say, hey, where's your permit? You know, the goal is here, not to nickel and dime people. It's like, hey, we have a permit and you need to do this. We would communicate this with Clark County Health Department as people go down there to get their food establishment vendor permit. If they're gonna operate in Salasburg, they'd have this information. They need to fill it out, come to it. It's pretty, pretty basic stuff.
How does this affect some of the more permanent mobile food vendors we have on private property?
Uh, issue them notice. Once, so obviously this does have a fee and penalties established with it, so it'll have to be published within thirty days. Once that's done, obviously hopefully they would be aware of it, we would go ahead and give them notice. Say this has been, this is now in effect. You need a permit. You can't, you can't permanently park here on this business anymore. What that does is when you start taking up parking spots for a secondary business like a food truck, it starts messing with the planning and zoning parking standards. Could you start eating up that business's parking, more or less? So again, it gets into some of the, the planning and zoning side of things as well.
Does it affect the one that shows up once a week on private property?
Because again, they're, they can sit there for twelve hours in a day.
Okay.
So, uh, going forward, this is a new ordinance. We don't have an existing ordinance at all.
We have one that talks about door to door solicitation and I think food trucks are slightly referenced in it. There is no standard or guidance or guidelines or permits required. So this would be its own unique standalone just for food trucks.
All right. They just never had anything in there about ice cream?
It was only ice cream trucks and ice cream trucks were supposed to come down and get a permit from the police department after being inspected and background checked. It's my knowledge. I don't think that's ever happened in my twenty years of experience. I've never.
I, yeah.
So, and honestly, the only reason I called ice cream trucks out separately is because there are some standards within the trucks. It talks about lighting. So there's lighting and illumination, but then there was something in here that I pulled from, I believe, I don't remember if it was Bloomington or Salem, but they talked about speakers on the outside of truck. Obviously, ice cream trucks have a speaker on the outside of the truck. So to allow for the ice cream truck to still use their little music producer, ice cream trucks are called out separately within this. Questions, comments, concerns? I'd like to introduce this as counsel for consideration. If y'all want to pass it, I would say, would ask that maybe you do first reading tonight, then we can push second reading off till the next meeting.
Okay, I think that would be fair enough. Like I said, I also, I think it gives everybody an opportunity to understand the fact that, you know, we're not staying that, you know, as you said, you get one today and you're permitted, like the health department, I believe, is what, every fifteen days or something like that, you have to renew your,
I think there's an annual.
One place to another or something like that.
I think there's an annual.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I guess the, the more, the more important part of this is just the enforcement and the penalties, you know, the town managers are, are do, designed, shall be, designated, shall be vested with enforcement authority to issue citations for violation of this section and competence of the, of this code. Violations of this section shall be subject to penalty and enforcement precision as follows. First notice of operating without a license, a warning. Second notice of operating without a license, the first offense as a license holder, hundred and fifty dollar fee. Second offense and license holder, three hundred dollar fee. Third notice of operation without a license, a third offense of the license holder, four hundred and fifty dollars fee and a mobile food truck license revoked for one calendar year. Any penalty shall be paid to the town Salasburg via the Salasburg permitting office within thirty days of issuance. Failure to submit payment will result in civil action and a two-year ban from licensed insurance or renewal. This order shall be in full force and effective on its passage and prolongation evident by this affirmative signature to undersigned as majority and duly elected serving members of this council. So again, you know, we're just trying to be great people. We enjoy this stuff. I know it's something that we're really trying to so again, I think just, we're just moving along with everyone else moving forward. So I, I do like Charlie's thought and I know it was asked out of us as a council to, you know, when we do certain ordinances to give the people in the public an opportunity. So I'll ask for a motion to approve the first reading.
So moved.
Yeah, a motion by Randy, a second.
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign, nay, motion approved. We'll just come back and bring us back into our first meeting February. Okay, our next ordinance, the ordinance two zero two five dash O R dash zero zero three, an ordinance amending the employee handbook for the town of Salasburg specified to emergency weather. I know this was something else that Charlie brought up to all us about, so Jake had to do some recreating and so here we are, so.
Underneath the section titled Emergency Weather, it just states if Clark County or the county in which you live declares a weather emergency, state of emergency, or a travel advisory warning to town hall. And then everything else stayed the same. So we were just clarifying that travel advisory warning that was discussed here at our last meeting. That's all.
Okay, okay. So just as it says there, now and therefore it be ordained by this town council, Salasburg, Indiana, section titled Emergency Weather shall be repealed and replaced with the following language. In the event of emergency weather conditions, we ask you to use sound judgment and assign your individual situation in making decisions regarding leaving your work early, arriving later, or staying home rather than attempting to reach work. Clark County or the county in which you live declares a weather emergency, state of emergency, or a travel advisory warning, the town will compensate you for your scheduled work hours. If you miss work in Clark County or the county in which you live has not declared a weather emergency, you will be required to use PTO to cover the absence. When making decisions regarding severe weather conditions, employee must follow the general attendance policy. Now, no other section of this employee handbook are affected by this amendment. This order shall be in full force and effective on its passage and prolongation of evident and by affirmative signatures of the undersigned and majority of the duly elected serving members of this council. So with that, I ask for a motion for approval. Got a motion by Randy, a second.
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign, nay. Motion to waive second reading of ordinance two zero two five dash O R dash zero zero three.
So moved.
Motion by Randy, second by Terry.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign, nay, motion approved. Motion approved, the second reading of ordinance number two zero two five dash O R dash zero zero three, an ordinance amending employee handbook for the town of Salasburg specific to emergency weather. Motion by Randy, a second. Second by Terry. Any final discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign, nay, motion approved. Thank you. Last, we have ordinance two zero two five dash O R dash zero zero four, an ordinance amending ninety five point forty five and ninety five point forty six as the code of ordinances for the town of Salasburg, Indiana.
Mr. President, I ask you to table that next one.
Table that? Okay, thank you. All right, we will table or number four. Okay. We have no unfinished business. We have some new business, Gonzalez Work Orders twenty twenty five zero zero one, on-call water, twenty twenty five zero zero two, on-call wastewater, and twenty twenty five zero zero three, on-call stormwater. Charlie?
Yeah, these are just general on-call work orders that we do typically at the beginning of the year. J T L will be bringing theirs at the next meeting. Again, general on-call work order for water, sewer, and stormwater, should the need arise, have the availability. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Lori, you have anything you have to ask?
Nope, I'm here for questions.
Present this evening?
Just, again, just as, just as Mr. Smith explained, they are just general on-call for you guys as the staff needs us. And they are separate for ease of billing purposes with the departments.
So I guess I'm looking here. There's three or four?
Looks like there's three total, uh, but not to exceed ten thousand dollars unless scope changes occur.
Is that per work order?
Correct.
Randy, there's, there's one for wastewater, one for stormwater, and one for water, water.
Drinking water.
It's moving fast for me here, Terry.
And these are the rates, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions or any thoughts? Anything you need to ask Lori or Charlie or anybody else?
These are just pretty much run-of-the-mill, basic.
Run-of-the-mill.
Yep.
Call if you need me.
Okay, all right. So with that said, I ask for a motion to approve those three work orders, not to exceed a total of thirty thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars each.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Terry, a second. Second by Randy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, nay, motion approved. Thank you. General comments from the public. Anybody have anything this evening? Okay. Stand report, Charlie?
Uh, first thing I have is if y'all recall, last year you all approved a couple, what was called extraordinary cost agreements with NDOT. One for DES number one seven zero zero one one one. And DES number two two zero one five nine zero, respectively. That's the thirty-one project on Highway sixty-four, Spain project. They were sent to me separately by NDOT. I think y'all approved the thirty-one one back in like July or something. You all have approved these for me to sign. They have now sent them back to me and combined them and want me to sign it again. So I'm gonna sign it and resubmit it. I just want it on the record and let you all know that we're doing that. Like I said, there, I've had a conversation with Jake. They've been approved independently, but now they're combined. So I've got to get another one to sign. So I'm gonna sign it, submit it, but again, just wanna kind of give you a heads up as they've already been approved.
So based upon their recommendation, you'd like for us to prove, be able to combine the two. Sure, all right.
There's no changes in them when they, it's all the same?
So, um, they actually have copies of the original ones in here, so.
Okay, all right. So based upon the knowledge of them wanting to utilize and put these projects together, the thirty-one and sixty projects which we approved separately, we're gonna combine them. Charlie's gonna sign them. Anybody have any objections? Got any motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion by Randy, a second. By Terry. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign, nay, motion approved. Okay.
All right, so I'll get those signed, submitted. Um, working through sledge hauling bids now for the wastewater treatment plant. I submitted in the second C C M G last week as they were due. Well, they're due, they're due Friday, but we did it last week. Circle Drive and Celesta, those were part of the original C C M G package that we put in for this year. It got kicked out due to mapping issue and whatnot, so I've resubmitted those in for that. We're communicating with NDOT. So what we'd like to do is we're gonna bid the C C M, the first C C M G project, but also we're gonna bid this other one too, so we can get it all done at the same time, ideally with the same contractor. Hopefully, we'll see how that works out. Just a special note, if anybody in the community is having an H O A meeting, please let us know. So your district representative or myself can attend. We had three H O A meetings last week. One of them was Lakeside. I was unable to make it. I know Councilman Langford was here for that and we had two different ones in Cover Bridge last week. So I'm gonna give a little bit of an update about Indian Oaks. So Indian Oaks Mobile Home Park is a private facility. And I know Councilman Langford had some issue and we did too. We, we do not, those are not our streets. We don't plow the roadways. We don't maintain the roadways. But we have to access them for obviously trash collection, water maintenance, sewer maintenance, fire, EMS, and police protection. It needs to be accessed. During a storm event, we missed two weeks worth of trash collection because the roads were not cleared. So we had issued a notice, special notice to the owners to come for the unsafe building commission. Councilman Langford sits on that along with myself. And we hope to have an agreement in place with them at the beginning of next month. And the hope is that they come to the table and agree that they will clear the roads within twenty-four hours of the storm event. I only bring all of that up because last week we did actually have a fire back there. A gentleman who apparently lived back there for quite a while, one of our residents, he works at Kentucky Fried Chicken. I found that there's a Go, a GoFundMe page that's been set up for him, but he lost his animals. He was at work at the time when it happened. And that fire happened four days before that, fire would not have been able to get there. So in meeting with them, you know, it was not just a conversation, say, well, if we can't get a garbage truck back there, we can't get a fire truck. We legitimately, that almost happened. It was a legitimately safety concern. So again, we're handling this through the Unsafe Building Commission, but I want it out there for anybody who may live back there who hears this. Like, we heard you. We're aware. We're working with it. We're working with the owners of the property to get it corrected, to make sure something like that does not happen again. So.
So just real briefly, Charlie, the, we have, they, are they on septic or are they on sewer?
They're on sewer. They're on sewer customers and water customers.
And trash pickup?
And trash.
Are they, geographically, they're part of the town?
Indian Oaks is part of the town, but it is, it's a mobile home park, so it's one parcel. So everything back there is private. They allow us access. We have a contract that's in place that was signed back in the two thousands, basically that says we will pick up trash per resident. We do not do yard waste. We do not do claw truck back there. But then also each, each unit is individually metered for water. So while it's one parcel back there, every mobile home unit that's back there is a unique customer from a town of Salasburg perspective.
Can you tell me if, I mean, are they the only one? Is there any other street in the town that's the only one that's like that?
Yeah, I mean, think of it like the J C parking lot, right? It's publicly used. You gotta have access to it. Fire and EMS need access to it. But it's private. It's their responsibility to maintain it. This is a similar situation, right? So, so while it is private, there are still the need from a fire, from a safety and a sanitation, health and safety perspective, that we need access. And it's their responsibility to make sure they maintain that access for those reasons.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Okay, I only have, I have one more question.
Hopefully have a great answer for you.
You know, it's, I think you will, but I was gonna go back and had somebody bring it to my attention within our district, ask a question about the noise study that was done near the at the new facility that does the, so I'm just wondering, has that been completed or is that still pending?
It has been completed and we have met with the owners of the facility and shared that with them along with thirty videos taken by neighboring residents of the concerns and issues. I've reached back out to them, requested follow-up because I wanted to go back to meet with their. wanted to go back to meet with their, uh, clients that are leasing the facility, um, to see what they can do to correct them. And we're trying to give them a little bit of an opportunity to do that. Councilman Amos and Councilman Langford. And I sat down with them here, what, a couple of weeks ago?
Couple, two, three weeks ago.
About that.
So is the, is the main complaint, maybe Terry could speak to it, is it AM hours, nighttime hours, early morning hours? Was, was that the?
So, it's a spectrum. It's, it's, some of it's operational noise. Um, some of it is employee noise. Um, they, they do run twenty four hour shifts out there. Guys will get on break. It's two thirty in the morning. They go out there hanging out in a group with a car, turn the music on. It's two in the morning. You got houses right there. Some of it is operational noise from accidents. There's been quite a few police, um, calls to the facility, not just noise related, but they'll have an accident on site. Well, again, that all contributes to the noise. So again, I think it's, it's not one, it's not one thing. Uh, one of the bigger complaints that we've had is trucks idling while they're staged waiting to get pulled back there. Um, so they're lining the, the road, um, near where the, some of these residential houses are. And trucks will sit there and idle sometimes non-deep. Um, so again, that was part of the conversation, you know, operationally changing, make sure that if they're sta, if they're staging, turn trucks off or stage them around. We talked about rerouting traffic so that, that the staging traffic doesn't come that direction. Maybe it goes the other side of the building. So, so like I said, there's some things that we won't, you know, we brought the study to their attention. We brought the police complaints to their attention. We shared the videos, emails and complaints. There's a petition that was sent to the town. We shared that with them as well. Um, and now they're, you know, basically give them the opportunity to address the issues is where we're at. And we're waiting to, we're waiting to hear back to have a follow up meeting to see what they've come up with.
So the study concluded that there was too much noise in, in, is that a simple assessment?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay.
Yes.
So we're trying to work toward a, uh, some type of, some, uh, remediation at this point?
Remediation and a long-term solution, not something that's gonna be a flash in the pan solution. We want something that's gonna be impactful and long lasting.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. All right. Uh, Assistant Chief Abs, anything? Okay. Good to see you though. All right. Mike Harris, JTL?
We're rolling along. I won't, I won't take too long.
One sheet.
Front and back. Here you go. Sunflower Valley, um, kind of the same. We're still, Greg's still working on the easements. We did get about half of them. Um, so we've got all the ones for the property owners that are customers. There are still some, there's still some affected folks that are not customers that we've got to get easements from. So we're waiting to get those from them, but we did get the public meeting scheduled. Um, so February fifth, six thirty here at Town Hall. Um, there will be a meeting. It, it is not a town meeting. We're just utilizing Town Hall. Uh, Greg will, uh, Greg will run the meeting. We'll be there. The intention is to get, get the easements signed at that, at that meeting.
Did you say six thirty?
Six thirty. Yep. And it's, it's the last line on there. Um, so the info's on there for you. And I believe, Charlie, are you gonna be here? Did you say you were gonna be here? You're just not running the meeting? Or are you purposely, or are you not gonna be here? I shouldn't say purposely. Okay. Well, it's not a, it's not a town meeting. It's not a town project. Um, we're just having it here. So remember, you don't take it over until everything's done. Sure.
And that was really the only reason I was here, but I think at this point, those questions have been asked and this is more related to stuff. So I don't know if I'm gonna participate or not.
This is really just to get, just to get easement signed. Uh, let's see, uh, lead service line inventory. So type three is underway. Uh, we are meeting with Bill Rigdon about that. Um, brought one of our, one of our new folks is sitting in the back, Jason Booth. Um, he's been working with, uh, he's working with Bill. I know he's met with, uh, with Charlie as well about this. So we're, we're working through that, formulating a plan on how we're gonna start. Um, we're gonna have to start identifying, like physically identifying in the field. So there's potentially, we've had some ideas about meter pits and maybe having to do some, some potholing. Uh, so there will be some digging around town to start physically identifying the, uh, the connection types. Um, thirty one, so nothing, nothing new with the dates. Um, and that, this is for water and sewer. So still anticipating a, um, April bid date and then starting construction in the, in the summer. We're, we're hopeful we're gonna get the easement from the school corp tomorrow. So, um, keep your fingers crossed. We'll see if that, if that comes through. Uh, water tank demo is done. Um, we worked with contractor to get the pay application process. We got it in, signed. We'll be sending that in with, uh, recommendation for payment. Let's see, town center sewer. So, um, that is basically slated to be, we'll, we'll time everything to be ready so that it's, it, it can't be completed until Ivy Tech is done. So we'll time everything with that. We'll work with Charlie on some, um, the timing of, of when that goes out for bid. Um, we'll have, I wanna say about a half dozen easements that are needed on that. Uh, talked to, talked to Charlie about that. We'll be getting those to the town here shortly, um, to, to, uh, for the town to acquire and then we'll be ready to, ready to bid.
RDC is working on funding for that right now.
Yep.
Both, both.
Town Center and Ivy Tech. Yep. Uh, let's see, Ivy Tech. So, uh, we're just waiting to issue notice to proceed, working with Mac on, um, so of course the, it was, it was awarded. I think we got all the paperwork. I think maybe that Michelle handed me a packet earlier. So we got all paperwork back from Mac. Um, should be, should be ready to roll. Uh, we will hold off on issuing notice to proceed until they get a lot of their shop drawings done and the weather's cleared up a little bit. We don't wanna start the clock on them until the, until the weather's clear. Um, and then as Terry said, still working on funding on that. Um, we were able to, we've, we've spent the last couple of weeks working with Mac on, uh, there were some permitting issues with DNR and we were able to work with those guys to make some changes that actually lowered the cost a little bit. Um, so the permit stuff's taken care of. There's gonna be a slight, um, deduction in cost. It's not gonna be, it says in hundreds of thousands of dollars, but, um, it was, it was good. They were, they were good to work with, with that. Uh, I mentioned thirty one earlier. Uh, Stay Road sixty is the, the, the same and then it changes and then it's the same. And so I think at this point, there's a document being reviewed. Is that right? What's that? Yeah. Oh, you've got it. Okay. Okay.
That's what I was talking about when it, now they sent me another one.
Yeah.
That's.
Uh, eighty page document to, to sign. So anyway, they realized that they were, they needed something from you guys. So they just sent in, Charlie's working with Jake to get that done. Um, CCMG stuff, uh, the last one, we're just, or I'm sorry, the twenty twenty three dash two, we're just waiting on, uh, once that last payment's made, we can get that wrapped up. And then the twenty twenty four dash two, you can see the bid schedule there. Bids are open, um, February sixth. And then Charlie mentioned the twenty twenty five dash one being, um, uh, being submitted. And then I think Charlie mentioned, we'll have our work orders at the, at the next meeting. So happy to answer any questions.
Mike, I have some questions. Go ahead. I have some questions. Uh, you're not gonna believe this, but I understand everything on here except for one piece. The, the lead service line inventory, uh, type two application and type three application. And the reason I'm asking this, I live in an older neighborhood and, uh, when you're talking about lead service lines, uh, we're inspecting them or is that what we're actually doing?
In essence, yes. At the end of the day, that's, the, the expectation is that you identify any lead service lines that you have in your system.
And that line is in the infrastructure before it gets to the homes or where is, or is that from the home to where we hooked up?
Yep. All of it, all of it to the main.
From the meter to the house is what we're looking for.
But it includes the, could include the, the gooseneck on the main. I mean, it could include anything.
So you'd be going to residents checking these?
Yeah. But right, right. And we're trying to, we're trying to figure out the, part of the problem is IDIM doesn't have much guidance. So we call and say, hey, we'd like to try to do this. And they go, oh, that sounds like a great idea. Let us know how it, how it works out. Um.
Uh, Councilman, do you remember when the letters went out and there was, I'm sure you got several calls about this. Everybody started flipping out about having lead and all the stuff, the lead. They, oh, we got lead or whatever. No, basically we had to send out a letter by IDIM and the EPA to certain areas of town within our water system that were, that were built before a certain year and says, you might have lead. You need to look. Now, well, before that, we sent out notification for a survey as, with directions, asking people to do the survey. So people who didn't do the survey then got a letter. This is all part of that lead and copper service line inventory stuff that's basically being handed down that we have to do.
So we were, the survey, we were asking the residents to do the survey?
We asked the residents to identify what their service line was because we don't know, right? We know what our mains are up to the meter, but from the meter to the house.
Well, that's, that's the reason I bring this up. My house is probably eighty years old. I'm saying if you lived in, let's use Lakeside for example, probably from the main to the home is probably copper, probably not, uh, I don't know what it is, but I can tell you what mine is. It's, I don't know if it's lead, but it's a black pipe.
Sure.
That comes in and it could be galvanized. You know, there's, it's a menagerie of different pipes that come through, but the one that comes through there. So, um, so I guess if people were to ask me, what's, what's the answer? I give them, this is coming in the next two months, three months that we're.
Yeah, next two, three months. We're gonna, all we're doing is looking. We're not, there's no fixing. We're just looking right now. No, not at all. So, so at the end of this, everybody's mandated to do the, the type one, two and three. And at the end of type three, in theory, you have identified all of the, the, the service lines that need replaced in your system, in, in theory. And then IDIM is gonna take all that information and they're gonna come out with another grant program to provide money to communities to start replacing those.
And the reason I'm asking the question is, okay, if, you know, for safety's sake, you know, I have all filtered water, but not all filters pull out lead.
Right.
So if I was, and my question is, if I was to change it and go ahead and have my, my service lines done, because I got galvanized lines into my house. I got copper, I got everything else. Um, what, what is before that, before the main? Is that in question in this?
Do you, you mean your service line, but before it gets to your house?
Before it gets to.
Correct. So it.
So that's part of this.
That's part of this. Right. Right. A lot of times.
We do, we do, we have testing that we have to do a lot that we submit into the states. We've never had any of our tests, whether it be within the system or at the water plant have any lead in it at all. So I just, I want.
Well, and that's an important point. This is not, you all did not have any, there was no alert that came to Sellersburg that said, you may have lead. Literally, everybody has to do this. Um, as from the, from the EPA on, on down to the state to individual water systems.
We do.
I'm just curious. I, I looked at those and I was thinking, well, if I didn't, I wasn't for sure where you were checking.
Yeah.
If it's just before the main or after the main.
So some, some folks are going out and they're potholing on both sides of every meter. So they're digging up the service line coming into the meter and the service line coming out of the meter. And they're just, they just go down the street and they dig up every single one of them.
So I guess a, uh, a developer or somebody in the last ten, fifteen years, there wouldn't be lead service lines.
Right. That's right. Even further back. So that was, type one was to kind of do a desktop survey to say, these are all built in the last twenty five years. There's, there's no lead in there. Take those off the list.
So what, what, uh, product, what, what materials used now?
Uh, there's a lot. I mean, there's a lot of plastic out there. Anything new is plastic.
Just the rigid plastic.
Yeah.
We just, we just had our water line from the meter to the house changed.
Needs plastic.
Four weeks ago, Marques come in with a plastic, like.
Yeah. Most of the time it's, it's like on a roll. They just.
Yeah.
Throw it in there. Yep.
I'll stop now.
No, that's good. Hey, I'm, I'm glad you said all but one thing there. And that made me feel good.
All but that showed up today, Greenwood, uh, unloaded material. I don't think that they broke ground, but they did.
Oh, out on, okay. Yeah. Good. 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 Yeah. They were waiting. It's RDC project, but Greenwood Sewer is, uh, uh, getting ready to start. They've just been waiting for the, for the snow to, snow to clear. So they should, they should roll through there pretty quick.
Okay. All right. Good. All good.
Thanks again, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, Jake, um, I do have, um, when, um, I was sitting there thinking, uh, we, uh, we have, uh, when, when we do some of these things on like, um, so the water, green, Sunflower Valley thing, uh, you know, do we have an agreement to discuss with, you know, the joining landowners or anything like, I mean, we, we don't have, we, I mean, for us, we, we stay out of it, correct? So I would just make sure everybody knows that, hey, this ain't our problem. So, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So, okay. Just wanna make sure everybody's under the same page that we, I mean, just said, this is something that we're, we're gonna inherit, but let everybody else kind of go through it. So, okay. Perfect. Thank you. Um, I don't know. You guys wanna flip a coin? Who wants to go first tonight?
Go ahead, Randy.
You wanna go?
No, let Randy go ahead.
All right, Randy.
He's on a roll.
He's on a roll, he said. No, I, I don't really have a whole lot. Uh, Charlie, I appreciate you being helpful with that and, uh, Mike, uh, answering my questions and, um, but past that, uh, I think, uh, last month, uh, I missed part of a workshop. Uh, I think moving forward, um, I guess I was, uh, thinking about it and praying about it, what our strategic vision is going forward. And, uh, you know, I'm trying to define and trying to get some input for people, what they would like to see for a town. And part of it was a, not necessarily a town square, but a town center, which, uh, we're not really definitive on a lot of that. But, uh, I think moving forward, that's something that, um, that we should be diligent and serious about. And any input that, uh, I'm just making it public, any input that I could get from anyone, I appreciate it. And, uh, I'd like to, to move it forward. But past that, just thankful for, uh, I'm thankful that the sun's shining and, uh, uh, some of the snow's gone. And, um, I'm glad that's kind of over. Uh, again, I'd like to thank our, um, the road warriors, the snow warriors for, uh, taking care of us as well as they did. I know it wasn't perfect for everybody, but, uh, I think we did a great job. And, uh, you know, I just think that, uh, moving forward, uh, it's, it's, it's easy to react, but, uh, having a vision going forward, uh, is, is a challenge. But I think that's our challenge right now. That's all I got.
Sure. All right. Thank you. Charlie?
I have nothing for tonight, except I wish we had a beach in town.
I don't know. It's, uh, I mean, I. You guys sent me a picture last night. We were down Destin Boarder, right there by the backboard. Yeah, an inch and a half of snow around. So.
I know.
I, I get it. So.
But at least.
Four, four folks in New Orleans, man. Wow. I mean, they got really hit with it. So luckily they survived a Super Bowl. Uh, from my end perspective of it is, is, uh, you know, uh, no more different than, uh, like every time that we all, uh, really do appreciate what our town employees have done. Uh, I know there's been some obstacles. I know, like I said, Charlie mentioned about, uh, everything that was going on out at, um, Trailer Park and, uh, and everything out there with, uh, two weeks of trash. I know there's probably a lot of work, uh, you know, where probably someone else had to come in and probably put trash back in another trash can to be able to unload it again. So, uh, so hopefully those folks from Indian Oaks are, are willing to understand, uh, our needs and our desires. Uh, you know, I, I, I did ask the question about, you know, how maybe we could maybe consider, you know, the conversation, uh, maybe sit down with Jake, uh, and, uh, you know, this agreement was signed back in two thousand. So, uh, I don't know if it's ever something that ever gets revisited or ever convinced, but maybe this is something maybe we need to look into to make sure that they do their due diligence. make sure that they do their due diligence of, of it from an end, uh, uh, for, from our, uh, safety standards and things like that. So uh, I love your thought, uh, Randy, at wanting to really try to educate the community here, uh, on a central position of what we're wanting to do here in our downtown, uh, area and, and, and bring in a lot more, uh, newer thoughts and ideas. And so, uh, we really appreciate if people would wanna share those thoughts and ideas with us. So, um, um, also, um, again, um, you know, people just, I think we're probably three days away from, uh, this snow finally going, getting out of our way. So, uh, uh, we really appreciate, uh, everyone's consideration and understanding that, uh, you know, uh, it's, we, we, our town, we have done, I think we've done our best, uh, providing, uh, safety and, uh, opportunity to be able to get in and out, uh, like everyone, uh, is able to do. And, uh, so, uh, and I appreciate that hard work. So I do know, uh, I saw where they was, uh, starting to do some different things over at Ivy Tech, uh, on the Scholar House, uh, today. So that's, uh, gonna be an exciting little uh, project. I know for the folks there at Ivy Tech, uh, really excited about that. So I think our basketball team is, uh, still ranked number one, uh, in their division, uh, continue to do well. So, uh, I know Randy Mobley's gonna be out on the floor on February fifteenth. Uh, so one of the basketball stars of the sixties. So.
Not in sneakers, no. Not in sneakers. Just, just hobbling out there to say hello.
Yeah, as much as I, 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 yeah. So, uh, uh, you know, again, uh, my thoughts and prayers out for everyone, uh, uh, that has lost a loved one, uh, here recently in our community. Uh, we've lost some good pioneers, uh, throughout the last, uh, few months. Uh, I know, uh, uh, my thoughts are with, uh, our township trustee, Billy Ramser, his mother passed away. Uh, so, uh, you know, Billy's been a big asset to our community as a trustee. So I appreciate, uh, you know, and, and, and my condolences to his family. So um, that's all I really have. Anybody else? Michelle, you have something to do? Rob, Michelle? Okay, alright. Okay, alright. With that, I ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Got a motion by Randy, second by Terry. All in favor say aye.